So call the meeting to order. Sean can hear us. Sean is remote. The meeting is being recorded. And we have one remote board member tonight. So Sean, if you could let us know your name, your location, if anybody's with you.
Sean Larry, attending from my home in Hinsdale. I have one child at home not participating in the meeting. And I am attending remotely due to COVID.
First up, we have review of the manifest. So Julia has them to start passing down. And, you know, as we talked last month, this is a new process for us to review them like this and not have them in the other room before the meeting. So I know we touched on it and things have been crazy and getting things together in the business office. So we understand, but just to keep in mind, you know, we're just maybe at some point, you know, the day or so before emailing them out. If we can, if that's a goal, we can maybe get to, you know, to the board, because there's a way the selectmen do it is emails the manifests out ahead of time. So they can look it over. We talked about this last month, but I understand there's a lot going on. Your face tells me, but that's okay.
I'm just thinking about what in the manifest? I hadn't really looked at a manifest a whole lot before.
Yeah.
Before, but now I'm creating them. So I'm trying to think, what do you want for backup in the manifest?
I don't know. Whatever, I guess whatever.
In some of the payroll ones, there's payroll information. I don't know if you want that emailed to you or not.
Well, Sean, do you know, because I know you've been to select meetings more than any of us, and that's the way they do it. I know there's might be a bunch. I'm sure they have payroll information in theirs too. But do you have any insight into their process?
I've never seen one of their manifests. All I know is it's much thicker than ours. So they probably have everything. But like I said, I've never seen one like live in person other than passing back and forth. So I don't know.
I think just having them beforehand so that we can, when we look at it, if we do have questions, we can be prepared for them. Or we can just email saying, what is this line? You know, something like that.
Yeah, I'll be happy to do that.
Yeah, and then that would just kind of speed that. Even if even just a couple of us have seen it ahead of time, then those people could just sign it and the others could take a look.
If you've noticed this month, the payroll manifest probably doesn't look like what you've seen in the past. We were scrambling just to get the payroll done. So that will be created for you for the next meeting and going forward. But the backup is all there and you get the system generated manifest. So you have all the information. It's just not in the same package. That was manually created.
And thank you to the business office and to, you know, you and Sarah and Gretchen, who is new, and everybody else who helped out, all hands on deck to get that out when our previous accountant had left. So thank you all very much. And that's right, Tom, Tommy, that sometimes a weird thing would show up like, wait a minute. It was several years that Gina's, once Gina got married, remarried, that her previous names various iterations. I think so. When you can just transfer on. I know it's been 14 years for figuring out how to get my back at that stuff. But I did a nod to Gen X and I got a traffic keeper. So I'd honor my Gen X roots. Actually, we're all Gen X. Jim was the last baby on the board. All right, great. Thank you, guys. And Sean, there's, you know, three of us here. So or four of us here. So the manifest is all set. You're welcome to come in when you feel better. Take a look at it, but we don't need you for it tonight. Okay.
Totally, totally fine.
Yeah, I can read this. Okay, so next up, minutes. We have the public minutes of August 17. You remember, we do have non-public minutes, but we voted to seal them. So those have been written up, given to Maria and sealed and, you know, put away. So, you know, to be unsealed and reviewed at some future date. So we just need a motion to accept the public minutes of August 17. So a second. Any discussion or corrections? Sean, are you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
And if I'm gonna forget you, so speak up when I do. So, you know.
No worries. I will.
Okay. All right, so all those in favor of approving the public minutes of August 17, say aye. Opposed or abstained?
And I'm an aye.
Oh, thank you. Yes, Sean.
Just said it.
No, I just said I'm gonna forget you. It's because I'm not facing you. And that's my excuse at least. All right, so citizen comments. Excuse me. As you know, later in the meeting, we're gonna have, we're looking at the new policy for citizen comments because there's a new law that took effect on September 6. But so there's much more. We have to look at that later. But for the purpose of this is in comments, we just have to decide which way we wanna, how we wanna handle citizen comments. So you'll see in the sample policy, there's some footnotes, but also I attended a webinar at NHSBA and they talked about, you know, about the same things that are in the policy. But so the kind of ways to approach it, so the law, the way it's written and it's being interpreted is, you know, you have to provide a minimum of, an opportunity for a minimum of 30 minutes of citizen comments. And the opportunity, we're just the important word there. And so one way to do it would be to have a citizen comments at the beginning, which before COVID, we had always one at the beginning and then one at the end. And then we switched to, I think it was just at the end. But we could open citizen comments for 30 minutes, take any citizen comments that there are. And then if there's no more comments, not enough comments to fill 30 minutes at the top of the meeting, have a motion to table the table of citizen comments till right before then on public. And then call for citizen comments at that point. And if there are no citizens here or there aren't any more comments, we close citizen comments and then move going in on public or move to adjourn whichever is applicable. And we've provided the opportunity for the 30 minutes. The other way would be to open it up for 30 minutes and like kind of set a timer, maybe have, you know, Maria or whoever, like keep an eye. Take any comments, keep it open, move on to. And, you know, once you take all the comments at that time, move on to the next agenda item. And then as you finish each item within the 30 minutes, ask if there's any more comments or if somebody new comes in and asks, and then close it at 30 minutes. So either way, you know, it's a little more disjointed to keep it open for 30 minutes and be stopping and asking after each item. But it still has the same overall 30-minute effect, you know, opportunity either way. So which way do you guys think?
I think I like a set amount of time at the beginning and then again at the end. Because while we're going through our packets and going through the meeting, citizens might have questions. And then that gives them an opportunity to ask something that we have talked about. So I think opening it up now, seeing if there's, you know, five or 10 minutes. If nobody, then we have the other, the rest of it at the end. And then if there's nobody, we can adjourn.
Yeah, yeah. And you don't even need to do five or 10 at the beginning. It's take all of them that there are and then, yep. Okay. April and Julia, and then I'll get to Sean.
I just, so do we have, we wait to the end? Do we have to keep it open for the remainder of the amount of minutes left in the 30 minutes?
No, that was a question that came up. And if I, and they do spell it out in one of the footnotes. That no, as long, if there's nobody here or there's only like five minutes of comments, we've provided the opportunity for 30. So, yeah, so we don't have to just sit here.
That would make me angry.
I know.
Okay. Then I agree that to allow some option at the end in case something came up that it says and wants to make a comment with as long as we don't have to stay for the 30 minutes.
April?
Yeah, I agree.
Sean?
No, I'm in concurrence with everyone.
Okay, I like that better than letting it go for 30 minutes and then trying to remember to close it out and all that. So, yeah, and then stopping and starting. So, okay, so that's how we'll do it. So right now, we have citizen comments. So we'll ask, we have a couple listed. We have no citizens here, but we have some citizens on this Zoom. So Maria, if you could see if this, if Donna and Vicki, either of them have a comment.
Donna, do you have comments?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vicki, do you have comments? Can you hear us?
I think she unmuted or she's muted.
Yes.
Well, if she does, she can put it in the, she might walk away too. Sometimes people will walk away.
And Teresa, do you, we're at the citizen comment portion. Do you have any comments that you want to share at this time?
I don't. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's, we'll move on to introduction of our new student rep to the board. Connor Sanglue, Connor John, whoever wants to.
I'll go through the process that we did.
Okay.
So first of all, congratulations to Connor. So we had three, and three folks that were running. So they did speeches and we did it on Pacer News and it was a diverse group. And then we did voting in advisory. And there were 250 students that actually voted and participated. Which was awesome. Yeah, that was great. And Connor had 160-some votes. So he was a unanimous decision. But all three did a really nice job with their speeches. And like I said, it was a very diverse group of students. We had a middle school student that actually participated and middle school students did vote. And I sat in an advisory while the speeches were going on. And one of the advisors was just, you know, helping the kids kind of, all right, do you have any questions? Do you understand what they were asking, things like that? And so I think we can do definitely better in the future. But for a first shot, I'm excited to have Connor on board.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Congratulations.
So Connor, if you have anything, I know, you know, going forward, you probably all have a report or whatnot, but anything you want to share with us? And then the board can ask you some questions.
Not for this meeting. Probably by the next one, I'm sure I'll have plenty of comments. For this first one, I'm trying to get a feel of things first, you know.
Awesome. And, yeah, we were discussing a little bit beforehand about, you know, that the, like I said again, I went to a webinar, they recently said about that, you know, the students are busy and whatnot. So we were talking before about staying for the whole meeting. But the intent of the law, it seems, was to get strong student voice on issues that the board talks about that are impact the students, that the students have a say in. So, you know, for as much of the meeting as you want to stay for and things that we're talking about that you find interesting or find that you want to bring back to your fellow students. And anytime the student is a rep, is a full board member, non-voting, but a full, so you can participate in discussions, raise your hand, chime in, ask questions. So for right now, I just want to see if the board members have any questions for you. Sean, we'll just start with us here and then we'll go to you.
What grade are you in, Connor?
I am in 12th grade, a senior.
Yeah, just jumping.
I don't have a question, but I would at some point. I'm probably not prepared today, but I would love to hear your speech.
Yeah, that's awesome, Julia.
Yeah, I would love to hear that, where the interest came from and hear the speech of why you wanted to do this. I think that's wonderful. Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Sean, do you have any questions or comments for Connor?
Does Connor have a board packet? So we can follow along with all this business that we're doing.
No, you know, we were talking about that right before it started. So he has an agenda. And we'll look into seeing, you know, what for as far as a board packet, the student rep should get. I would assume they should probably get everything but the non-public stuff. Because it's all public information anyway. So, yeah.
He's a full participant.
Exactly.
Except for the voting part, so.
Yeah, yeah. And you don't have to, it's not like homework. Yeah, you don't have to do anything. It's just so you can follow along with us. And then you're, you know, we're gonna be good. But thank you, Sean, that I forgot to mention that had come up too. So, thank you. Anything else?
No, just basically what you guys were saying. I mean, the rep should have everything we have except for the non-public stuff that they're not part of because they're gonna participate in a discussion. They should have the materials there to know what they're participating in.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Yep, so we'll make sure, Maria, that we have one packet. Go to Connor in the future. And, yeah, and then same thing exactly. Congratulations, you know, we've all were in your shoes, running for office and, you know, wait to see how the votes came out. So congratulations. Yeah. And thank you, John, for the way you kind of structured it all. It was really, really great. That's just awesome.
Yeah, I think it was a pretty decent process.
Yeah.
I used to just select students. It usually was student council president and things like that. But just to open it up to anybody that was interested, I think.
Yeah, I'm sure we got three students.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and then, and then once some of the students, and again, I was sitting in advisory, they were like, I want to be a part of this. Well, we had announcements, but they didn't understand.
I'm thrilled that there was any interest at all that much. So that's great.
As it goes forward, every year, it'll be, it'll be nice to see it roll a little, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Yep, and there is a scholarship that the New Hampshire School Boards Association has available that you can apply for, you know, in the late winter or spring for student reps. So we'll make sure you get that information too. All right, thank you. All right, so next up is update on COVID items, Wayne. Hopefully, it's not too much there.
Actually, I'm thinking back, September 21. It's September 20. We are in such a good place relative to those years. We have two current cases that we know about. We've had eight since the beginning of the school year. One is the middle high school, seventh, the elementary school. If you look around the county, we're down about 4%. We're at 125 cases over the last 14 days. So we're down 4% in the last seven days. So it's a good trend line. But if you kind of look at the horizon, there are some troubling pieces. For example, Keystone State College implemented masks through the 28th due to testing waste block. They found that their numbers are up. So that it's more contagious in the area than it may have been a month ago, but it's not nothing like it was last September, the September before. But we wouldn't want to pretend it's not there. Obviously, it's the third leading cause of death in the US. Death rates are up 10% from what they were prior to COVID. So it's still a real factor, but most of that is issues for people who have underlying health conditions or elder. So, you know, we're trying to do our best. We're following the CDC guidelines that we implemented based on our last meeting. I haven't had any complaints. And we'll continue to keep the board updated if anything changes.
Do they have any questions for Wayne? Sean, do you have any questions for Wayne?
No, I do not.
I'm sorry to keep you make talk, keep making you talk. You sound, you know, like a bullfrog. I do have one question for the board. Yeah, last year, we did the tracking on the website, the tracker on the website. And also when there was a case, you know, Maria would email the board to let us know there's a case that, which, you know, this building or that building. Do we want to keep either of those or both of those going for this year? What are your thoughts?
I think we should keep the website. I think it's a good informational tool for people. I mean, I like knowing what's going on. So information is good. I like information, so I wouldn't mind getting emails, but it's not totally necessary, I think.
It's not necessary for me to get an email. If it's on the website, that's fine.
I would say the only time that I would think that we institute the email notification was if we had some serious spikes in cases. But based on the current case amounts, I think that it's not necessary to get that notification. But, you know, should a trend change? I think we should be alerted at that point. But right now, but I do think the website, I think there are people that like to have it on the website.
Sean?
I agree with what I've heard.
And so do I agree. So put it, keep it on the website, keep it updated and email if things go really, a big spike or you see some falling. I'm sorry, what?
If they go haywire.
Yeah, if they go haywire. And then that way, if we're curious, we can check the website. Just to see how it's going. Okay, awesome. Yeah, so and Justin's here. So what's kind of Justin's, Justin and the nurses and whomever.
Maria sort of coordinates nurses and Justin.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you, guys. Next up on the agenda, we have the Hinsdale PTSA donation check for the bleachers. We also had at your, at your spot. And Maria, did you get them off to Sean?
I have them. I have them.
Cool, so Sean has it. We also have another check for today from the Hinsdale Student Activities Fund. So the one from the Hinsdale Student Activities Fund donated toward the bleachers is $1,000. And the check from the Hinsdale PTSA is $1,527.12. Awesome. Yep, so we would just need, oh, Jody?
I just, I just want to interject that the $1,000 that came funded through the Hinsdale Student Activities Fund is actually a donation from the class of 2021.
Oh, yes, it says it right there. Thank you. Thank you very much from the class of 2021. Thank you. So any questions? And then if not, we just need a motion to accept the donations.
So moved.
And any further discussion about that? Sean?
The only thing that I would suggest is since there was, there were questions at town meeting as far as what the actual cost was, what the donations were gonna be, all of that. We didn't have all that information that we make sure to have all of this tallied out for the next town meeting.
Oh, that's a good point. Yes, we can have like a report of it.
Yep, it's on my list.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Yep, exactly. Yeah, so let's vote and then, and then, yeah, then we'll make sure Murray is on Murray's radar to get the thank you notes out. So, okay, so all those in favor of accepting the donations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Okay.
I'm an aye.
I'm sorry. Oh, my gosh.
We know if you're not an aye, that you'll let us.
So bad at this. No, when, I really am, when one, just when it was one person. Like last night, I was good with the work sessions. But, yeah, no. Sorry, Sean, you know.
I'm not offended.
Thank you.
I will speak up.
Okay, so motion passes. So Maria, I know you probably have a process so if you could get, thank you, letters or whatnot out to the two groups. Thank you so much. All right, next, we have the emergency operation plan. So we're gonna move that to non-public to discuss that non-public. And then after that, number five, we have job descriptions. Wayne asked me today to see if the board would like to pass over this, these job descriptions for tonight. Sarah wasn't able to make it tonight. So we're on HR here to ask questions. And also was suggested push it back, push it over to the personnel committee to review and then bring it back to us, you know, with your recommendations or whatever. So if we're in agreement about that, we need a motion to pass over this and return it after the personnel committees dealt with it.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Okay, so Sean's motion and Jana's second. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sean?
Yay.
Did you see what he did?
He held up a sign.
Yeah, well, I totally, I couldn't see it. It totally pixelated your face.
Oh, it's because he's.
That's my souvenir from my super spreader bench. Well, one of, one of my souvenirs. You can hear the other one.
Yeah. Okay, so all those in favor, we all said aye.
So those are, so those are gonna, so am I getting something else or it's this one I'm reviewing?
I think it's that when we have a personnel committee meeting, you'll, yeah, review that.
So this is the final.
Get Sean and I. Yeah, and then it'll, and then it'll have to come back to us to be, you know. But, yeah. All right, so next up, we have the NHSBA proposed resolutions for the delegate assembly on October 1st. So, so all we need tonight, so I think, I don't think anybody, because Jim was usually our delegate. I don't think anybody else was able to go. So I'm, I'll go anyway, because I'm on the board. So I'll be our delegate as well. So, so we just need to take a vote. And we don't really have to do it. We can do it as a group unless there's, you know, a few we want to do. We don't, we don't agree with and we want to say we. But if we agree with the board of director, the board of directors' recommendations, then, you know, we could do them all as one group and just, you know, vote that we agree with the, you know, recommendations. If there are other ones on there that we want to talk about, any questions you have for me? And maybe we want to not agree with, then that will have to be pulled out. Basically, we're voting tonight so that you, I know which way to vote on the first for our board. So does anybody have any questions about any of the resolutions? I can answer any questions. I can answer any questions. Sean, any questions?
No, I went through them and I actually agreed with, well, this time around anyway, I agreed with the NHSBA's recommendations on each of them.
Okay, so then if we're all, and of course, I'm in agreement because I voted on Maria. So so if, so we just need a motion to, I'm quite sure how we word this every year, but to accept the support, support, thank you, support. That was the verb I was looking for. Support the NHSBA recommendations. So moved. Second. Okay, so motion and a second. Any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, or I can't get it through my head. Oh, my goodness. Opposed or abstained? Okay, great. Thank you, guys. So that is how I will vote on the first. Um, the next item up is NHSBA Fall Twenty Twenty Two Policy Update. This is just informational only. We don't have to take any action on this, but if anybody has any questions, I think for the most part, Wayne had many of these in his superintendent report last month, so it's not a ton of new information. So are there, were there any questions or comments on those? Yeah. Yeah, it goes up to the, to here. Yeah, our policies. So yeah, so I got this the last page. It's just a bunch of, you know, blurbs about policies. April has this total hack. It's this binder. It's so cool.
I do like a, it goes, I can do a pretty thick punch.
Alright, thank you. So next up, we have a review of policies about regarding the age of entries, early entrance into kindergarten, and the third one is the enrollment policy. And this came up, I think it was June, maybe May, May or June. So I don't know if Wayne or Joe wants to speak to it. I I, I think if, if I remember, and April had to refresh my memory this afternoon, so thank you, April, that that for preschool, we looked at making it near the same, similar language to the kindergarten with the, with the two weeks that the superintendent can.
And I think Joe probably could speak to it better, but it's just, you know, we don't want to allow students in and then a year later say, okay, well, you don't camp in this. So we're just trying to line up the, the ages, and I think that's all we're doing.
Excuse me. Yes, that's, that's correct. That, you know, the two-week window would align with what's already in for preschool so that there is that consistency there.
So does anybody have, I mean, we probably all remember the discussion.
Yeah, we already talked about this, tried to come.
Yeah, yeah. So I just think the next step would just be to, next month, bring us an updated policy, you know, plug it in where it needs to be. Because one of them is, just doesn't have the language or two of them don't, but, and just bring us next month updated policy to review. Sean, do you have anything?
No, I do not.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Wayne and Joe. Next up, so we have the aforementioned public comment policy. And I had sent just a breakdown. Maria kind of broke it down. So thank you, Maria, for breaking it out here. We have pieces we need to choose, the highlighted pieces in, in here. So normally what would happen is it'd be a first reading. We talk about it. Maria would bring it back for a final reading with the changes made, but because the law already took effect last week, that we, it was recommended to put it on our agendas as a final reading. And so then next month, we'll just have it as a review, just to make sure everything's plugged in correctly. So we've already answered how we wanted, how we want to handle it, which, which isn't quite a plugin, but we've done that. So the minimum time period of thirty minutes is now maximum, but we can choose, if you see in number three, so you put in a minimum of thirty. And the next sentence, a maximum. So we could put a maximum in. That's optional, to put a maximum in. We've never done that before, but we could do it, or we could just leave it as, you know, we just take as many comments and as long as it takes, and then there's a big issue, you know.
I think it's more important to put a timeline on the individual speakers.
Yep, and that comes a little bit later. So yes, I agree with that. So are, I see the head nodding. We're, are we in consensus to, we don't need the max?
Right.
Yeah, I don't think we need a maximum, but I agree with Julia. And we've done that before. We have a whole lot of people. We take the total time. We say everybody gets a minute, minute and a half, whatever it is. So I don't think we should set a maximum.
And then, so then the next section, it's on the second page of it, section B four. That's where individual speakers will be allowed in, you know, X many minutes. So when we have a lot, we've, we've said like a minute, which goes by so fast, but you know, we could do a minute, three minutes, five minutes, five would probably be the outer edge of how much we want to let one person talk. But um, but yeah, so we would just need to pick a, a time there for the allotment. What do you guys think? Three, I mean.
I think it two, you could say a lot in two minutes.
Yeah.
You could say plenty.
I think one, I think we've had, you know, experience with one seems a little too short for people. Sometimes.
It's, it's short, but when you have a hundred people commenting, you know, you know, I mean, when you have a hundred people commenting, one minute's still over an hour and a half. So I think I mean, it depends on how many, it depends on how many people are commenting there. I think that if you
I mean, can you base it on?
I think if you pick the smaller, I think if you pick the smaller number, you can always increase it, but if you do the bigger number, you're going to have a hard time decreasing it.
I think five, five minutes is far too much.
Far too much, yes.
But I don't mind two or three minutes.
Yeah, I mean.
I think generally, somebody can say what they want to say in, in a couple of minutes.
Yeah, and I, I do agree. It's funny, when Sean, I don't know if you could hear, but when you said about a hundred speakers and April and Gina were like, but we never have a hundred speakers. Maybe not a hundred, but when we were coming back that first fall from COVID, we would have a good fifty people.
Well, we had, I had one, I had one when I was chair. It was a hundred people.
Wasn't a hundred?
It was.
We'll see.
Not everybody's.
We just blocked it out. But yeah, so um, I mean, I see, let's see here, we're may have, well, and it does say in, in, in B four, you give the, a number, and it said the board may at the outset of the public comment period, increase or decrease the individual time limit, as long as it's, you know, the same for all speakers. So I see where Sean is saying, one minute, if it's one minute, we can increase it, or do you know what I mean? I, I just think, I see what you're saying, and I agree, because of those COVID meetings where we had, wouldn't be for an hour or more listening to comments, which was wonderful, because we, everyone got to say, but I think to put one, it looks, doesn't look great.
We, you can't.
I, I think to put two on there, and it does say we can increase or decrease. So if we have a large group, we say our normal process is two, but because we have a hundred people, we're going to make it one. Agreed. Does that sound so good?
As long as we have that option, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have the option.
So it's clearly, it does clearly call that out. So, yeah.
Okay. We all think two. Okay, so two. The next one we need to, oh, okay, B five, this is optional, to request speakers to sign up prior to the meeting. And if we do, we just need to outline how that's done. I, I mean, I know bigger schools, bigger areas will do that, larger areas, but I, I don't, for us.
I don't think we need it.
B six is allowing public comments remotely, which we do.
We already do.
We should continue that. I think we're all in agreement, yeah. And B seven is optional, written comments to be submitted in advance by those who cannot attend the meeting. And if we do that, we have to choose how many weeks in advance they need to be submitted and how many words, et cetera. So, um, I don't know.
I think people should be able to submit, I mean, comments writtenly if they can't attend.
Yeah.
You know, and I think a week before the meeting is, we'll get it in the packet. Right?
If it's right, if they submit it a week before we get the packet.
Well, what are you, now Maria puts the packet together, so what?
Whatever, that would be more like, how much time you need.
Before is fine. Yeah.
They have it in seven days before our meeting.
Yeah, seven days before, then that would give you enough time. And, and if, if for some reason it, it was seven days, but you know, for some reason it didn't get it, you could always email it. And then, you know, we would have it as part of the record when we got here. So Sean, what do you think about that?
I think we should absolutely do what you guys are talking about. I think we should allow written comment a week before. I think that's completely appropriate. Yes.
One week. Alright, so Maria, you, you got all that. I got it too, if you have any questions. So thank you, Maria. Alright, so um, then. Yep, I missed one. Did you want to say how many words? Oh, how many words? I, I think that would be.
I don't think, yeah. That's a little harsh.
What do you think, Sean?
Well, you can't have, you can't have a, you know, fifty-page novel. I mean, you know what I mean? I, I don't know how many words would equate to that, like two-minute speech.
As I say, can you read it in two minutes?
You know, but.
Readable in two minutes or less.
Well, I mean, if, if you're setting a time limit on the public comment, then you should do the same thing for written.
Yes, one page would be two fifty. So like three hundred, three minutes minimized at the three, three hundred, that would be reasonable about.
Three hundred is reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, I just, for you guys who know that kind of thing.
Yeah, I thought it was two fifty a page.
You want to say two fifty? One page or two, one page?
No, because you can, you can shrink that font down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I would say, I would say three hundred. Myself, but that's, I would say three hundred, just to give a little bit of the way there.
If I were three hundred, I mean, how much more time could fifty words take? Yeah.
Okay, fine.
Thank you. Great. No, thank you. Alright. So what we have to do now, so it's a final reading, so we would have to approve policy BEGH as a final reading, as amended, as amended, as a final reading, as amended, or with the changes, however you want to word it. And then, like I said, next week, next month, not next week, next month, I'm sorry, next month. We would just have it to review, just to make sure everything was inputted, you know, as we expected. So just need a motion.
I will make the motion to accept policy BEGH with the amendments we have just discussed as a final reading.
A second. Alright, any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? And I saw Sean's mouth said aye, right? Yeah, so your mouth go aye. Thanks. I watched you at least this time, so.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And thank you, Maria, for shepherding us through that process. Next up, we have a group of policies for first reading. And I'm not going to say all of them, but you see them there on your. So I just need a motion to approve those as a first reading. Second. Any discussion or questions?
I had, I think, a couple of questions. Bear with me one second. Is there something in the, for the, for policy DFGA, the crowdfunding? Is there a, and there may be, maybe I missed it. Is there a chain of command to how this is supposed to flow? Like, is it teacher, principal, superintendent?
Yeah, that would be the typical chain of command that any of those procedures would be followed.
Okay.
Okay, did you find it in there, Joey?
Where is it?
It's in section three A and three B and three C.
Page three of six.
Page three of six.
Oh, cool. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
Did you have another one?
No, it was kind of all one question, but it was on the pages before where the answers were.
Okay. Any other questions on any of those policies? Okay, so there are all those in favor of approving those as a first reading. Say aye.
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 Opposed or abstained? Okay, great. Thank you. Look at that. We are all ready to other business and it's, you know, well, six forty-five, that's not super great, but it's, it's good. Sorry, anybody have any other business?
I, Joe has, has I forgot her name, reached out about the dog tags to you.
Oh, she has not, and that's.
I haven't gotten anything either.
I will try and touch through it tomorrow.
Okay, because I had messaged Jim, because he wanted me to take that over.
Yeah.
And said I would probably hear from her in August, and I had it. So I sent him a message. Okay, great. That was all I had.
Gina, do you have any other business?
No other business.
Julia?
No, thank you.
Sean, any other?
I don't think that I do.
And I just have one thing. Oh, thank you. Connor?
I need a business.
Do you have anything you want to bring up?
I have had a few students say some things to me already. One of them was about our hat policy, but I'm already aware of the board's position on this. So unless any of you have any notions of change, I haven't been able to prepare any more formal of a report on the hat policy at the present moment. So maybe for the next meeting, I'll be able to prepare something more detailed for you all.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Another thing is, a lot of our LGBTQ plus students have, are talking to me about how they would like students be able to choose the color of their graduation gowns to be more inclusive towards non-binary and transgender students. Just like to hear the board's opinion of that.
Yeah, I mean, we can, this came up a couple of years ago. It was brought up, and it was discussed. I don't know if we took a formal, I don't think we took a formal vote on it, Sean. I don't know if you remember. I think Gina and you were. At that point, it was, it was, it was, it was a few years ago. It was prior to COVID, but there was just discussion, I think a parent had brought it up at a meeting, but we never formally took it up. So yeah, I mean, that could definitely, I mean, for tonight, I think we, you know, thanks for, for bringing it up, and we can talk about it if we want to, you know, if anybody wants, you know, look into it further, discuss it. We, we have some time since September, but that is, is, thanks for bringing that up. It's a really good point.
Can we put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah, if the, any of you can request it. So are you requesting for it to go on the agenda? Okay, cool. Yeah, so we'll put it on our agenda for our next meeting. And Connor, if you want to bring some information back to us from the students, and then, you know, the administration can have some information. Yeah, they can talk in citizen comments and, you know, to talk to anything, speak to anything, not just on the agenda, but definitely they can speak to it. Yeah.
That's all the comments I have for today.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, and my only thing is, just a reminder, we have a joint goal-setting session with the administration on the twenty eighth, I think that's a Wednesday. Was it twenty eighth? We've sent out our draft goals already. I think, I remember, and I could be wrong, at the last meeting, I think you had mentioned the, the administration had, was working on some things. Okay, and yeah, anything, if, if you could get us, if you have a draft, get it to us ahead of time, so we can take a look before that night. If you could do that, that would be great.
Great.
When is the twenty twenty?
Twenty eighth.
Yeah, last one's.
I think six, I'm not, I have six locked down on my calendar.
Four days of the week. Yeah, like, like two weeks, two weeks from now. And we, we will, I'll talk with Wayne and Maria about getting some sandwiches.
She's just trying to appease me.
Gina, I know you, you weren't able to make the board one, but I, I did not have sandwiches for the board one, and
Isn't there cooking?
No, I didn't bring anything. I don't even think I brought cookies. I might have brought cookies, but it wasn't pretty, Gina. It was not pretty. I know, I don't know what I was thinking. But anyway, so there will be some sandwiches. Alrighty, great. So um, next up is financial report. What we do have, I want to point out, we have Sarah submitted a report in the packet. So if anybody has any questions on, Wayne could, might be able to answer any, but, but thanks, I just want to thank Sarah for her report. Anybody have any, any comments or questions? What's Sarah's report? It's right before the financial one. It's on the flip side of financial report. No, she didn't. I'm so sorry, I don't know what I'm looking at, I don't know why I was, I thought I saw. It was me, I'm sorry, I was, I thought it earlier too, and I flipped through, and I'm like, okay, that's Sarah, and then. Sorry about that, let's reset, financial report. There's always so much, this binder can help.
Madam Chair, you have my report, and I'm willing to answer any questions. Additionally, I know there was been interest in the free and reduced numbers, and I have free and reduced update for you today. So as of this morning, Erica has processed a hundred and sixty-one applications. So that's a hundred and sixty-one families, and a total of two hundred and two students. Qualify as either free or reduced, we have a hundred and sixty-three students and forty-two reduced students. These are in grades PK through twelve, and that represents thirty-seven point five percent. Erica's getting, the, the number of applications has fallen off a little bit lately, but she's still getting several a day. And so I think our numbers will increase, we should also pick up some more numbers. When we run the report at the end of the month to find out what the state has, so at the end of every month, we run a report. Through the DOE system that updates all of our students' names, and that their IDs go up to Concord. And it brings us back a report which tells us if they are getting benefits from any other place, and so I. I give that to Erica, and then she checks it against our free and reduce, and she always picks up a few there, so I think we'll do that as well. They're still coming in, so I think, again, the numbers will go up, and I also wanna say that. I think Erica's just done an outstanding job getting through a hundred and sixty-one applications, a very busy time of year for her, and she's really. Really been right on top of it, so.
Give her, thanks for sure. So does anybody have any questions for Jody?
I, one question is the thirty-seven point five percent, how does that compare to pre-COVID numbers?
So, I just, I just did the fresh fruit vegetable report today, our application for today. And I had to put in our January numbers, and we were at, I wanna say it was forty-one percent in January. So it's a little bit lower, but I think it's, I think it will go up, and you know, I, I just read something, I think it was in the New York Times about. How the fact that child poverty is really reducing in our country, so. Which is great.
That's a good thing.
But, but so much is tied to it, so. And I'll, I'll let you know more next month, as I, as I learn more.
Thank you so much. Thank you Julia, any other questions for Joey?
I'm curious about the number of applications compared to pre-COVID, like, are we getting, are we seeing the same amount? Are we, are we less applicants than we were? We were forty, whatever percent.
And I don't really have an answer to that, it's, it's only anecdotal, we don't have numbers, but. Anecdotally, it feels about the same, I think, that Erica said, so. We are processing them differently, so folks can go in and do it on the type of system, which is what our food service program runs. Or they can do it, give it to us. Paper, and either way, Erica will still go in and manually do the calculations, just in case the systems, we don't know about that system yet. So we're being careful.
Great, thank you, Sean, do you have anything for Jody?
No.
Thank you Jody, next up's curriculum.
And I just wanna also start by saying thank you to the board for the people that were able to attend that are older than me. It was great to have people there, and also thank you so much today. On a very hot day, and it was just a nice little break in the day before they went into a afternoon of training and a very gym, so. We appreciate that you guys.
Any questions for Karen?
No, I'd just like to thank the PTA and the PTA for providing all the food that day, too, that was, that was a nice. They, teachers liked it, I think.
John, do you have anything?
I was having a coughing fit, so I'm all set.
Thank you, like, I guess I got my answer. See Connor, I told you, we're laid back, sometimes we forget if anyone has a report, or packets get out of order, you know. Alright, next up's technology, Justin. Any questions for Justin?
I'm wondering how, how we're doing on these two hundred and six tickets, like, the first week.
I think we're, we ended today, combined, between the three of us, we have just over twenty tickets. I think we have like two hundred and sixty now, since I wrote this report, so, we're making it through.
Yeah, does that seem like a lot? We have, we have a really good team in place in technology right now, so, awesome. Sean, do you have anything for Justin?
I do not.
Great, thank you Justin.
I'm first now, huh? Thanks, now I'm here, you have my report, two things I wanna add, if I may, first, one, my apologies to Mrs. Killie and this. This Woodbury for not setting, we were supposed to have a behaviors support team meeting on Tuesday, and I failed to set up the appointments and calendars. So we'll have to reschedule that, and secondly, you may recall, we had an offer for piano donation, and I checked with the music teacher. We have a good piano on the stage, we have a good piano in the music room, we didn't really have another place to put one, so I, I told the donor. Person who was interested in donating it, that we just didn't have the space for it, regrets, but thank you for thinking of us. Any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Yeah, any questions for Joe? Sean, do you have any questions for Joe? Alright, thank you Joe, alright, John?
Yeah, so, you do have my report, but I just, you know, being here for the first time, it was, in my opinion, a great opening day, but. Wouldn't have happened without the staff and their flexibility and their patience and everything they did from. The middle school team and the sixth graders, you know, I love the energy, that was all fantastic. You know, we have a lot of things going on, can't wait to that middle school dance, this Friday. I'll be there, and it's also nice to have some, you know, normal sleep, we're gonna have the college, the mini college fair. The number isn't seventeen, I just got the, the numbers is twelve right now, still is great, and, you know, getting more of a focus. For students and get them exposed to co-secondary options, and. And we've had a lot of new students, you know, twenty-five new students, and I think that may not have counted the person that started yesterday. And we only had about seven transfers, so classes are larger than typically. Teachers have expected, we still have some small numbers, but, you know, we have classes in the twenties. I have a Spanish class, twenty-two, Spanish one, and for Hinsdale, my understanding is those numbers are larger than. Expected, and, yeah, an English ten class full, so. But teachers are being flexible, and, you know, but it's, it's part of the whole process, but that's a good thing. We want more students enrolling, so I, I, I look at that as a positive.
Great, thank you, any questions for John?
I have a quick question, not to be like every downer, but. We, last year, a lot of our discussions centered around, I'm just wondering how it's better with that, the adjustment, we, we're still. Dealing with some serious behavioral adjustments post-COVID, and that was a challenge last year for the administration, is that better this year?
Either one of us can answer, go ahead.
So I will say, my numbers are down for office referrals. I believe about one month in last year, I was at about fifty or eighty. It was very, very high. Currently, I think, what's it, about sixteen?
That's great, I just wanted.
Yes, so it is, and that's just without being prepared.
Yeah, and I apologize, but that was such a big concern. Cuz it ties so closely, like, to the emotional piece and emotional factor of the COVID, and the how the behavior was, so I was, I was hoping that you would give me that.
Yep, so it is, so it is much slower, if I could, you know, for lack of better terms, or a dark kid, I would think it would be. That's what we're experiencing, from what we're working with them, where, what we're doing this year is. I don't wanna say putting more on the teacher's plate, cuz they have so much on there, but we're still, we're really trying to follow the student handbook. That is handled at the classroom level, if possible, first, then gets referred to myself. I guess, under the guidance of our new detention system, it's deferring a lot of students, meaning. That's how it's written in there for admin detention, my detention, I throw that around quite a bit, and they're like, wait, Friday after school for an hour? We do no way, so kids are being, staying in classrooms longer, they're participating more, the behaviors are down, so I. Everybody seems to be happy so far.
That's wonderful, thank you, thanks for giving me.
And we, we can actually give you a report in October comparing last year to this year.
It was such a concern for all of us, and for me last year, to just continually hear about the struggles, emotional and behavioral struggles the kids were having, and so I was hoping that. Some of those issues, just like we're making up our lost learning gaps, that, that things are settling back down emotionally for the students as well.
Absolutely, and I still have all eight hundred and fifty-three referrals from last year, saved by months, so if you wanted those.
I just wanted good news, and you gave it to me, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you Julia, that was a good, quick question, we got a lot of good feedback there, that's awesome. Any other questions for John? Sean, do you have anything?
Nope, I had one question which was answered.
Oh, no, he's all good, his question, we, we anticipated his question apparently, alright, awesome, thank you John. Next up is superintendent's report. Any questions for Wayne? Sean, do you have anything for Wayne?
No, the only thing I had noted on Wayne's report was to make mention that we should have that. Breakdown for the bleachers for town meeting, but I had already stated that, so I'm good.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next up committee report, personnel committee, we know you guys are gonna be reviewing the job descriptions. Anything else, nope? Health and wellness?
There was some question about that, I only know because at the last meeting of last. School year, they were looking for a new chair for the committee. I, I recall that it caught everybody was a little bit of a haunt too. I know Katie Leonard was taking the minutes on those, so maybe we check with her and see where that ended up.
Great, thank you, finance and budget committee, so budget committee hasn't, like, started yet, I'm sure. We're gonna just talk about it today, I'm sure it's gonna get, gonna get going soon. Finance, I think April and I and Jody and Wayne should talk and set a meeting, I'm, I've reached out to Dennis, I'll, I'll reach out to him again. But, you know, we should get rolling, you know, with it, I know, I don't know if you want to wait till after teacher requests come in, or, I mean, that's the end of this month anyway, so. Yeah, so probably early October, whatever, yeah, so we'll decide, and then, budget committee needs to meet anyway to name their rep. And I don't know when they're, we're gonna do that, so we'll just give you a price of it, does that sound good? Staff development? Legislation and HSBA, so the delegate assemblies in two weeks, and all the new laws, you know, we've seen all the new laws. I, I don't think a whole lot is, is happening yet, we had elections, you know, obviously statewide, primary elections yesterday. So who knows what's gonna be coming down the pike once the general happens and all that stuff. Alright, HASP, so we haven't. Selectmen, Sean?
Nothing.
Facilities, Julie and Sean?
So we were gonna have a meeting on Friday, but that was gonna be my surgery day, which is now postponed for four weeks, which is fantastic. So we've been trying to figure out the date, and I think right now it's looking at the twenty, like, the twenty-eighth, is that it Wayne? I don't have a calendar right in front of me, so yes, we push it to the end of the month, so I think that's when we'll have the facilities meeting. And, you know, that might, might actually be a good day to have the personnel meeting too, just kinda get it all done and over with. But Wayne, I can email you about that to see if that works.
That's a good idea, to get them both in.
And that's it.
During the day, I pulled those committed.
I mean, you can always, it's a new year, you can always renegotiate the timing of the meeting.
When did, nine thirty, is that what we just said, I'm just, I'm emailing myself, because we know I have a calendar issue.
No, it's on September thirtieth.
Nine thirty AM, my goodness, like.
No, two fifteen, no, still pretty, right smack in the middle of the workday, so, but maybe after we'll do personnel, right, so not earlier.
We can figure that out.
We discovered I had some calendar issues last night, so I'm emailing myself as we speak.
Thank you, community connections?
Nothing new, just if anybody has anything, they'd like posted to get.
Yeah, and Maria's been great about giving us, sending us stuff, or when we see stuff on Twitter, you know, we'll post some different things, so yeah.
Posted about the bus schedule today.
Yeah, so thank you all, thank you, behavior support team?
I attended, I attended that meeting.
How'd it go?
I absolutely agreed with everything I had to say.
I was a little lonely, like, I was in the dark.
So I'm like, so nobody's gonna hear me typing right now, I gotta pay attention.
So Joe, you let us know when we have something rescheduled?
What's a, what's a good time, I, I hear Julia's troubles with time, so.
I know, I, and I, and I totally understand that, for some people, which for Sean, Fridays during the days if they are. What, I can be fairly flexible, I will say probably. What is it supposed to be really usually?
So we had changed last, because it used to be on Fridays, because Sean was on the committee. And I'm, I can't really do a Friday morning, that's just hard, so we decided on Tuesday mornings. At like nine thirty, ten o'clock in the morning, but. I can do whatever most days, except for like Mondays and Fridays are really tough.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, as long as I get morning and it's in my calendar, I'll be okay.
Yeah, and I think the, the staff was really happy with like the Tuesday morning, instead of Friday.
So I'll look for the next available Tuesday, and schedule that first meeting.
Thank you. Thank you guys. Joint loss, probably, of course, I've been.
I'm assuming somebody will tell me when there's a meeting.
Brad was the chair, so I assume, yeah, somebody else will be, so, yeah, it'll happen. So, next up, citizen comments, so. Maria, yeah, see if anybody has any comments.
Teresa, do you have any comments for this portion?
I'm all set, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Donna, do you have any comments?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Thanks Donna, and Vicky, do you have any comments?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, it doesn't appropriate time, but I was curious, what are students, are students able to participate in these citizens comment sections?
Absolutely, we'd love to hear from them, actually.
Thank you.
Definitely, thanks. And then, like, you know, too, if, you know, we have the agenda item, like, we're gonna put the LGBTQ graduation gown question on there for next, if, and, and, you know, John or, or Wayne jump in, but if, if you have any students who want to speak to that particular it doesn't have to be a citizen of comments, we could hear from them when we get to that time during the discussion, so we can let the students know if they want to come.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's, not to speak out of turn, but if there's an issue that the students are having, or something that they want to bring to the board, is that something that would be on the agenda?
You know, that's a great question, because he's a board, board member, so he could just go through Wayne and I, right?
Probably should have your email so that we could prepare the board, if there's like a policy that applies, and also, obviously, John so that we have the information available to do a good discussion.
Yeah.
But I think a director is a member of the board.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so how it works now is if any board member can put an item on the agenda, and how it would work is they would just email the chair. And the chair, and sometimes the chair, and Wayne, sometimes just the chair, but then I would pass it on to Wayne, and because Wayne and I are in contact when we set the agenda, so, and, and anybody, so you are a member of the board, so any, any item that you want to request to put on the agenda, just, yeah, we'll get you, we'll get my email, I'll email John, and, and make sure, and I guess the two also maybe, I don't know if you want to copy John, if you have an item, you know, if you want to keep John in the loop, maybe you want to talk to John before you email me, like, you guys confer, and then
Yeah, we, we, we'll, like, we, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, I'll just have a comment.
No, it's not like we met this morning, just gotta go over and prepare, you know, and we'll do that ahead of time. You know, a week ahead of time, anything, so.
Great.
So everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, and usually Wayne and I are the Wednesday, so the week before the board meeting, Tuesday, or when, Wednesday, the latest, we're, we're setting it, so yeah, so that's perfect timing, yeah.
So I'm thinking about the student representative, representative and your role, and it's really focused on the middle, high school, but what about our elementary school students? Is there a way for them to, you know?
Yeah, I
Look at that a little deeper, because you're representing the high school, middle school, but they have a whole other building.
Yeah, I'd have to, because what the policy is in here, it's one of the ones we were, you know, reviewing, so, yeah, let's dig into the policy the next time and see, I, I think
It does say high school in the policy.
I don't think elementary teenage kids are articulate enough, perhaps, too, I mean, I have trouble sometimes.
I just want all of our children to be represented.
No, I think that the thing is, in the policy
Joe's here to represent all of our students.
High school, and it does mention buildings, but I think that's for, who have multiple high school buildings or whatever, not in our case, yeah.
Okay.
But
I couldn't remember what the policy said.
Yeah, so Joe, Joe's kind of their spokesman, but I don't know, maybe it's a thing to do is encourage them, I don't know, or maybe you do that now, encourage them to bring anything, like, you know
I, I will definitely encourage them I think, you know, that's part of what Karen has promoted for the last couple, three years, is to create that agency and voice, or
Absolutely.
Hopefully, we can continue that.
That's awesome. Great, great answer. All right.
I'm not sure if this would be appropriate or not, but it may be useful, and if you guys don't think it is, that's fine. Could you possibly get Connor a copy of the new board member training from NHSBA? That might be some good information for him to look through, to know what to expect at board meetings, to know what board members do. It's a really good training, and even if he was just to thumb through it, it might give him, it might give him a good head start.
Yeah, I have a book, I think, and I can, I'm gonna be, so, yeah, they have like an online training, too, so I can forward that, but then when I, I'll ask Barrett if I can have a copy of the actual book, because I'm gonna see him in two weeks at the delegate assembly, so I'll get, there's not
My book's like 15 years old, is there an updated edition?
There might be, I can get that for, do you want me to get a couple of
A little light reading?
Yeah.
I have was old.
You had to be a board member, yeah.
I have a book, if you'd like, and I think I probably have a book that's more current than yours.
Yes, mine is wicked old, too. You can picture it, the cover of it and everything, yeah. Yeah, so, so we'll do, we'll get you some information from the NHSBA, and then I'll, I'll pass it along to to John, and he can pass it along to you, and then, you know, however we want to do it, so I don't want to just email you
Don't be afraid.
Yes, on your
Don't be afraid.
Oh, gosh, no, don't be afraid.
I'm looking at this, like, he's going, what have I gotten?
Yeah, and you can, you know, participate to whatever level you want, you know, we just wanted to give you resources, so. Okay, so, um, if we have nothing else, just need a motion going in on public?
Motion to go in on public?
Second roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, Sean?
Yes.
All right, awesome. Okay, so yeah, so we'll just take a little break. Thank you.